Brown, Howard, Jefferson, Madison, Monroe, Vernon, and Washington Three, Republican David Hoare, and Libertarian Rhonda Green. And could we please have the County Council member, District Four, representing Gibson, Franklin, Pope, and Washington Four, Republican Frank Nobles, and Democrat Carrie Wischmeyer?
So, okay.
Right.
We're gonna have to do that.
I have to use this chair. Let me get that. Carrie Wischmeyer. Am I saying that right? Frank Wischmeyer. There we go. Hi. I was gonna say, move that down a... Yeah, to help keep some track. All right. Mr. Spenderly, we'll start with you this evening, sir. Please tell us what you have been doing to prepare yourself for the office of County Council.
Well, I've been a CPA. I've got a master's degree in business administration and I've been a controller for a growing organization for 25 years, which has made me... gives me a lot of analytical challenges and work with expenses and trying to keep expenses down and such. And, you know, watching what's going on and listening to what's going on here. You know, we've got several issues we need to look at and try to find the answers for.
Just pass the microphone straight on down to Mr. Nobles. See if you can first go ahead and answer that question, please.
Yes, I am. Hope the voice doesn't scare you too bad here tonight. I've been serving the last, oh, four years as the councilman for District Four. I think we've done a reasonably good job. At least I've been able to work with the council on resolving a lot of issues that's been before the county. We've accomplished several things. We've... Of course, a lot of people may not see the everyday, but we've kind of slowed down the spending in the county and trying to get the budget back where the budget operates the way it should. We spend what we can, where we can, and what we know we have to do. And I've heard a lot of discussion here tonight about money. But you know, there's just a lot on how we spend this money is dictated to us as how we appropriate how we do things. But I'll just close with saying that opportunity presents itself. I'd like to continue with that four years and that four years.
Again, I think most of you know my extensive background in city, county, state governments, also all my degrees and things like that. But most importantly, I have had the opportunity to serve you as one of your county councilmen the last four years. And I think that's the best experience. It was an Iowa experience. And I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with the other six councilmen. I think we've got a really good team that's out there overseeing the best interests of the county. Thank you.
I'm a newcomer to the group. I've been coming to the county council ever since I decided to run in February. I have a degree in nursing, unfortunately. It's not in business. But I also have a family farm and have been active in running a family farm ever since I've been little. I mean, I had been... Because I was an only child and my father encouraged me to always do what I had to do with family farms. So that has been my background. I have been in the keeping of the farm for the past 28 years and as a partner with my father on the farm. So that is why I decided to run for county council and help with the budget on that.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Green and I own indiana proud dot com. I've been attending meetings, I think, for seven years. I've been worrying over that, the exact number, what have you. What Indiana Proud has turned out to be is basically, people say, "We're having a problem with this meeting. There's a problem over here. Would you go ahead down there and record that?" And so, say like with the park board a couple of years ago, the tourism board. Once the camera is in there, a lot of the... And we're just gonna say corruption kind of gets cleaned away. Okay? So, you know, having said that, I do have a business that I've owned for almost 25 years now. I sell nationally and internationally. I'm an artist. And I grew up here. I would really like your vote. Thank you so much.
My name's David Hoare. I farm, make wheel farms since 1979. Graduated from Purdue University in 1983. Been four years on the county council. Actually, what got this all started was I've been on the Indiana Farm Bureau State Local Government Reform and Property Tax Reform group for eight years. Got me very actively involved in knowing what was coming down from the state and the local issues that we were going to receive. And so, two years before the elections, I got started coming to meetings pretty adamantly. I had other things to do on the farm, but it was important things as far as to give back to the county. But in that, I felt like it was important to run for that, to give what I had found out from other parts of the state with other groups, with other council members, and other people that are throughout the state of how to address local finance issues that we have.
My name is Frank Nobles and I too am probably sort of a newcomer. I ran for council at large two years ago. It was defeated, but I'm not a quitter. The opportunity presented itself to run again with retirement, one of our councilmen. I have not been a resident of Indiana. I've been here for about 35 years. I own a small farm in the southeast corner of the county. I pay the taxes. I drive the roads. I see a need. I see a need for lots of things going on in the county. The opportunity presented itself, and here I am. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Have a question. We won't go to a rebuttal on that type of question, but we will from this... From here on. And we'll start with you, Mr. Nobles. What two... What do you see as the two most important financial issues now facing Washington County?
It's hard to nail down just two. But if I had to say two things, we've been lots and lots of talk about the jail, jail construction, the cost of construction. There's been lots of talk about courthouse and repair and maintenance. There's always been talk about the roads. Conditions over roads in Allen. Well, sometimes we seem to be backing up the roads. They're getting ahead of us. We talked about employee insurance. The county hasn't been able to give raises to their employees for quite a few years. So to nail it down is two important things. I think you're gonna have to... I'm gonna have to wait till I get in there and sit in a seat and sort of prioritize where we're going. But all of those things are important to me. They all affect the livelihood of the people in Washington County, especially employees in Washington County. Employees are not happy if they're not making more money. Everything we seem to be going, we're either standing still or at some point we're backing up. Two steps back, one step forward. Need to reverse that trend and at least take two steps forward. If you need, we have to take one step back. Thank you.
Just two? Well, for one, you know, we've had to deal with the insurance issue and it's been a real detriment to us as far as where we're at as far as not only financially, but where we're at with retention of good employees on the... For our county. I think that we've kind of moved over that hurdle right now. We're in a better position now than what we were about three years ago. And there was a lot of circumstances happened three years ago with self-insure that was... Couldn't be perceived or reflected or seen out ahead. You know, there were circumstances that happened that put that self-insure thing in a tailspin that we couldn't get out of. I think we've jumped over that. I think we're in a better position. The other thing is this, is with accountability of our human resources, are we doing things efficiently and accountable with the labor forces that we have?
I think number one is that we need to go ahead and get our council and commissioners under control. Usually, when an organization gets into trouble, you have what we can just kindly call pigeon and hissy in the meetings and outside the meetings and that kind of thing. If you don't get the corruption under control, you don't get the costs under control. Recently, the Peta Boa Board threw the public out of an open meeting, several times. A Peta Boa Board is the Property Tax Assessment Board. And these people are community people coming in trying to get their taxes lowered because it's tripled or doubled or what have you. They did not get a legal hearing. Corruption is expensive. Okay? And in a lot of ways, you know, we need to get this under control so that we can keep our costs under control. Not only moral, but financial.
Okay. I know they said only two reasons. I think one good thing would be the insurance that we've all had to figure out what to do with the county council, or they have had to. Because what do we do? We don't have to have employees. We don't have employees with good health insurance. If we do not have employees that are happy, then we don't have good employees. Because a happy employee is a very good employee normally. And another thing is our roads near me. We have several still, private roads. We have our county roads are falling through. We have several holes in the county roads that have kind of gone over. The order does help retain the condition of county roads. And if we had better roads, we will also have better people coming in, more job opportunities. Because people are coming in to see what's going on with our dollars. We need to do some more... Have people come in and need some more industry here in Washington County to keep our tax dollars here in our county if we have.
Our biggest expenditure would be the criminal justice system, which includes the sheriff's department, prosecution, probation, parole. And all those things continue to go up, up, and up. And as we continue to find ways to fund those, it's becoming more challenging. The second would be personnel. Our biggest cost in any government is the personnel. And what a struggle it has been to take and include benefits for our employees, the insurance, the longevity, pay raises. It's been a real struggle and a challenge. And hopefully, we've got some of that worked out that's coming here.
You know, one of the things that I keep hearing, you know, about money and doing all these things, but you can't spend what you ain't got. And we as a council today have taken and made the hard choices to get things under control. That's why you have some of the problems you have. We have X amount of money that comes in from either property tax or other revenue streams. Those monies are sometimes determined by law how they're spent, not by us, I mean. So what we've done is, is we've made the hard choices. We did do the things that it took to get spending back under control. We did make the cuts that we needed to make to save the money that we didn't have to spend to begin with. For several years, we was spending on a deficit of $3,000 to $4,000 to $500,000 more a year than what we had. You don't have that now because we took it and we put it under control.
Well, I'm hearing kind of the same thing here a lot from everybody and some of the other people that, you know, the expense accountability departmental-wide within the council, maintaining the budgets and being within budget, that that's hard. I understand with some of this stuff. And we shouldn't take the brunt of the pain on this out of the employees through their insurance and raises and such. You're only gonna keep good employees and attract new good employees if you offer attractive pay and benefits. And we've not done that. And I've heard from several employees throughout the county that have been very frustrated with this insurance thing. And we've got to get that worked out. I'm glad it's getting better, but we need to maintain it and that's for future revenues.
You know, what I said earlier was is we've kind of got spending under control. I do would like to give everybody... I think for some of the jobs that we do, our vacant offices are much greatly underpaid. But with the money we got, are we going to raise more revenue to increase these benefits and do these things? Are we gonna add more taxes? Are we gonna increase... Well, you've got a property tax cap on right now that prevents one from hearing. I gotta stop. I can go on forever.
You won though, Mr. Nobles.
You know, as far as the money goes, it's the first time in years that I've been attending all of these meetings that the commissioners have taken or asked for bids on the health insurance. Going into it was $15,000, averaged $15,000 per employee. And the health insurance companies or the insurance companies came in and it was about a third of that. You know, once you go ahead and open it up for bids, you know, we're morally and financially supposed to do this.
Last few budgets I've been involved with, we've had department heads in. We've taken everything to the last piece of paper, to the last piece of paperclip in the offices and made them as frugal as we could as far as the operations of each one of those departments. And I commend them for doing that. But even this year, we still had issues as far as budget constraints. We're just not producing enough revenue as far as to take care of the infrastructure that we're doing right now.
Mr. Nobles, we'll let you ask this question. Our time is up. It's eight o'clock and the audience has been here for two hours already sitting. But we've only asked these people two questions. If you allow me the indulgence, we'll ask them one more question and then let them go have their closing statement. I appreciate all of you being here to just ask you two questions and close it down. It really doesn't seem proper to me. So we'll ask the one third question to be last. Salem is in the process of constructing a new airport, which is being completed in phases over several years. And the primary source of funding for that's from the FAA. But the county has, the last several years, put in some matching dollars. As that project continues to proceed through its various phases, should Washington County continue to contribute dollars to that? Or do you see that there are other areas that would be a wiser spend for the taxpayer dollars of Washington County? Mr. Nobles, we'll start with you.
I think we need to look at the end of the road. If we're calling it the Salem Municipal Airport and the county's gonna be restricted whether it use of it or their portion of the funds coming back from whatever that airport gains to us out there, I'm not gonna sit here and say, "No, we shouldn't fund the airport." Every time you increase infrastructure, you seem to... It seems to bring more people to your county. Now, do we have... Do we have enough resources in Washington County or in Salem right now to justify an airport? How many people fly their Air Jets into Washington County? That's a hard one to answer. We've got to... We've got to be able to reap some return from our investment or stop investing and put the money somewhere else.
Economic development is an interesting animal and we don't know what really drives as far as bringing industry in or keeping an industry here. Airport could be one of those components. Our hospital could be another component. You know, there's all kinds of different tangible variables that could bring economic development. Economic development is very important. Right now, the county has invested $250,000, county money appropriated into the airport to help for them to get their funding from FAA and matching funds to that point. With the airport stopped down and to get to the airport, there's an infrastructure that has to be taken care of. And most of those are going to be county roads and easements into those roads. So we're not... You know, even though it may be a Salem Municipal Airport, the county is surrounding all the way around. We're gonna have to look at the infrastructure to get in there. And I think that'll be our contribution when the airport is finally finished.
The county contributed money to the airport so that they wouldn't have to pay back or we wouldn't have to pay back $1.5 million, if I understand this correctly. I'm all for, you know, putting our name on everything. I'm not necessarily, you know... I have no dog in this fight. But I do... I do understand the attempts to go ahead and, you know... Go ahead and take a piece of the pie, so to speak, that we've already paid for. I don't know. Would it be of any benefit for it to be a countywide airport? I don't know. You know, we don't really have enough facts to go ahead and deal with that situation right here. But no, I don't regret the county giving the money to go ahead and save the airport. It was a political problem that the county basically saved the city of Salem from, which is okay. It's all good.
I believe that the growth of the airport is good for our community. I also believe that it will help, hopefully, bring in other jobs and other businesses into our area. I'm not sure if it should be just Salem. It should be Washington County. To me, it doesn't matter what the name of the airport is because when you go out into the community... Now, we can differentiate from Hamelsburg, Salem, Beacon. But out in the state, we're basically Salem. So we just might, you know, as a county, we might as well pick who we are. We are Washington... We are from Washington County, but we are mainly city of Salem. But I do believe that the airport has been very good for us as far as growing. Yes, I hope it does continue to grow. As far as the money, should we continue to support? Hopefully, with every other business, I hope it eventually is able to support itself and it will not... It will help bring money in to rest.
Just like all things that involve dollars, I want to see how much. I want to see the As and the Ns for doing it. I want to see what we're gonna get in return. So to sit here and say, "I'm all for putting this money into this project," I can't do that at this time. I want to see every dollar and go from there. Thank you.
Well, I think at this point, we're already committed. We've made that commitment. We've started. We're looking at getting that first 3,000-foot runway completed and then we're gonna be looking down the road into an additional 2,000 on. So we, like somebody mentioned, we've already spent quarter of a million dollars and we've got what we've got. I think it is gonna be a driver for economic development. So at this stage in the game, I know how tight money is in this county. I mean, trust me, I know. But one of the things we have to look at is what we spend, what that return on that spending is gonna be. And we ought to know what that amount's gonna be. And if it's one that's reasonable and it's gonna have a good return, I'm for it.
I'm basically a supporter of the new airport. And I think my reason why is because I think it's brought in a lot of federal money and we've had a lot of opportunity. And you're only gonna have economic development with it. So do I think we should remain a partner with... It's been a couple of us... You know, we've already made this decision to be a partner and I think we need to remain a partner. But in... Watching the expenses, I think we need to kind of see where we're gonna be at and make sure we're not running this by ourselves.
Any rebuttal? Any additional comments? If not, Mr. Spenderly, we'll let you start with closing statements, sir.
Okay. Jeffy Spenderly, running for county council, District One. And I appreciate everybody being here and the sponsors. The... As I said at the beginning, I'm a CPA. I'm a... I have a master's degree and I've been involved in the growth of local business for 25 years. We went from one store to five. And so I've had to help manage the expenses and that growth and make sure we didn't get out of hand. I am not a... I'm not a politician, not as well a big orator that some people might be. As far as the selection, I have nothing against Ben. I think he's a great guy. And we'll see how it all works out. I just want to help.
My name's Benjamin Bowling. Been a lifelong resident of Washington County. I think in the last four years, I look at this from a voter's perspective or from a taxpayer's perspective. The person I want doing the job is the person, I think, that will protect my interests. And when I look at the hard decisions that we've already made in the last four years, along with some of the other members of the council and the commissioners and across the board with all related officials, I just think that I'd be a wise choice if you decide to cast your ballot. I'd appreciate it. Like I was saying, I've already demonstrated the fact that I'm not willing to back away from the decision when it has to be made. So with that said, here again, I want to thank everybody for coming out, thank the sponsors, and appreciate your voting, member. Thank you.
Again, I'm John Rebels, District Two, county councilman currently. I would like to thank you for that opportunity, sir. I would like to thank the Salem leader and Farm Bureau for this forum. I would also like to tell you that I will continue to spend your dollars as wisely, as effectively, and as efficiently as possible. And if you could, I appreciate your vote. I'm the number four.
I'm Teresa Dittman. I'm county council, I'm number two. I am running for the first time ever in an election and I would like to try to do my best for the county. My history is I have been a nurse since 1979. I had a BSN, had worked 25 years at Carver Memorial Hospital. But unfortunately, the doctors won't let me go back to work. So that is one of the reasons I've decided I want to do something else for my community. I've been nursing as... All the time, so it's time for me to get back to my community now. Come back into the county. I've been a farm daughter, I've been a farmer ever since I've been born, basically. I've been working... Was raised here in Washington County. Was born here in Salem Hospital. I've worked here in Salem. I know what's here in the county. I still get out and talk to our community and to our neighbors. Know what their needs are. And I would like to try to help the community as much as I can. Thank you.
I want to thank the leader and Farm Bureau. I know I've been on... I was on the Farm Bureau Board for a number of years and I know it's a hard thing to pull something like this together. And I appreciate the time and expertise that goes into this kind of thing. You know, corruption is expensive. Okay? And I've been around a long time. I'm gonna just... I'm gonna go out on a limb and say seven years. I've attended more meetings than anybody up here. Not that that's a really festive thing. It's a little bit sad, to say the least. And what I'm seeing in these meetings, in the commissioner and council, and Peta Boa Board, and a lot of things, are danger signs that, you know, just like you saw with the Delaney Creek Park Board years ago and Tourism Board, we're in trouble. And I need your help to go ahead and fix this. Thank you so much.
I'm David Hoare, running for county council in District Three. I'm a seventh-generation farmer in this county. Our families have lived and died here in this county. My dad was a county councilman back in the late '50s and early '60s. And he kind of engrossed into us to get back to the community. It's not for any type of political gain or fame or fortune, that's for sure. In fact, I've actually given from my farm economically to sit off here, but I feel like I need to get back to a community that's given back... Given to me and my family over the years very well. Thank you.
And again, I'm Frank Nobles.
It's not for any type of political gain or fame or fortune, that's for sure. In fact, I've actually given from my farm economically to sit on here, but I feel like I need to get back to a community that's given, back, given to me and my family over the years, over very well. Thank you.
And again, I'm Frank Nobles. I'm running for the council, council seat, District Four. I am the first generation of my family to be in Washington County. I might made it up here from Texas about 35 years ago. I served in the military for 26 years, was a Vietnam Air veteran. I managed the National Guard Army in Salem for 14 and a half years. I was part of the construction of that building. And although I don't have the experience of a politician, I don't want to be labeled as a politician. I don't want to be labeled as a public servant. 26 years of my life, I've spent giving to the people of my country and I want to give to the people, people of my county. I appreciate your vote on number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your candidates for county council. Mr. Nobles, Joe Williams, Ron DeGreen, Tom DeGraw, Ron Green, and Frank Nobles. And now we come to the Salem School Community School Board. Mr. Todd Uli, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Aaron Shockey, Ms. Monica Spolting, Mr. Bill Sumback.